I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence, please? Roll call. Counselor Jeff Steretz.
Here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
And Counselor Scott Steretz.
Yeah.
We have four members present. We have a quorum.
Okay. Item number five is, we are going to discuss, have discussion on the election of a council president due to the two-year term. The only issue that we have, I've been looking in the charter, is the fact that if we make a motion to nominate somebody, I think you can vote on it, but that person has to accept it to move into that position is the way, I would think. It doesn't read that way, but it doesn't read that, you know, they should be present to be able to take on that position. It would, and honestly, I know what it'd be like if they decided, Freddie, that you wanted to be, that they would like you to be the president and you weren't here. And, you know what I'm saying, I don't know. I think, even though he's, there's been discussion on who you guys think would be it, I think we're gonna need to have that confirmation of acceptance of that position, because it's a position that you're voting on, someone to move into a position, so.
Well, was this here or where?
Yeah, he sent everything else.
Did he send, do you guys all want to go?
I understand that, and I actually read the same thing. The problem is, we can't use an action on email or social media of any kind as a move ahead. That's something that we were told many, well, I don't know how many years ago, that we can't use that as a vote, like he can't vote. You can use that as, as his, you know, wanting to move forward, and yes, he would agree to it, but we can't use it as a, can we use that as an accepted, an email? I didn't think we could use email as action.
Well, under section 122.21(c) of the revised code, council member can't vote if they're not in attendance, can't take any action at a meeting if they're not at the meeting. So you can't do it telephonically, can't do it via email. Statute does not obviously say anything about what happens when council nominates someone for an office, is accepting the office, like as part of the actual process, I would think it is. So, I mean, what I talked to Kathy about was the fact that if you were to nominate someone and vote in favor of someone not here, I would think that person would have, could, at a subsequent meeting, accept that nomination. I think you'd be without a council president, you know, during that interim time period. But I don't know that it stops you from, if you wanted to elect someone who's not here. Just to culminate the process.
Right.
In understanding the code, I think they would have to accept that at a phone meeting.
Add it for a moment. He couldn't just call in and?
I don't think so.
Okay. Where's he at?
Coaching.
Huh?
Coaching.
So... In other words, if we can nominate him, vote on it, untabled, or?
I just think that you can nominate him and vote, but we just can't accept the vote until he accepts the position.
Well, I think you could, you could elect him.
Yeah.
He would have to.
He just has to accept it.
At the next meeting, or whenever, you set up a special meeting, whatever, he would accept the nomination and officially be council president.
Because when we've had him before, and we voted on, it's been a while, Jeff, you served two terms.
Right.
When they're sitting over there and they decide to take that position, they move to the council position, our acting council president. So if you elect him today, I don't think he could be the council president until he accepts it. That's, that's just it. He gotta be able to accept the position.
Do you get sworn into that position, Mayor?
No.
No. Just sworn out.
I don't know, I just wonder, because I've been board president of the airport, and you do have to be there, whoever it is, to be.
I've been looking all over. That is something that I think probably should be put in the charter, that if you're gonna accept a position, not, you know, this is different than an ordinance or a resolution, whatever. I just know that you can't vote via email. You can't, you know.
Yeah, anybody.
Do any of that.
Could he possibly, could it be accepted at a committee of the whole?
You could accept it at any public meeting. No, you can't vote at a committee of the whole.
Okay.
Well, no.
But we see we're already.
Well, the action, the action, you can't take action at committee of the whole. So, we can hold a, we can hold a special meeting tomorrow, if you want, just so he can accept it. I guess let's act, and then we can have discussion. Let's do that. We gotta act first.
Okay.
Okay? So, I'm going to ask council for nominations for council president.
I would like to nominate Shane Chamberlain.
I'll second it. You live here in a, like in a club, and if you don't show up, usually that's disappointed.
Yeah. It says vote.
I'll make a note, a motion to close nominations.
Second.
Motion to close nominations moved by Counselor Jeff Steretz and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jeff Steretz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
And Counselor Scott Steretz.
Yeah.
For yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
But, I mean, I just want a question.
Yeah.
You said we couldn't do it at council hall. I mean, we are voters, we're not really voting. All he has to do is accept it.
Yeah, and that's an action.
So, now we need a motion?
You could, you could have a committee of the whole meeting, a council of the whole meeting, and then you could have the meet, like, right before that, have a special meeting for him to accept it.
Now we need a motion to elect him. I'll make a motion to elect Shane Chamberlain as council president.
That's second.
Motion to elect Shane Chamberlain as council president, moved by Counselor Jeff Steretz and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is, this has happened before. I mean, it's really hard when you have emergency meetings and you have stuff like this, that, I think it's pretty evident that we need to be here for these votes. And I understand things come up, they've come up for every one of these, but it, it kinda made it a little chaotic for us today, especially in this, this, so. That's just, that's all I'd say. It's, it's a difficulty trying to make action, move forward, when we don't have enough people here to do it. And we are down to five. That's it.
I got one thing. I spoke with Shane, maybe I can't say it without him here. I asked him, in his position with the county, can he attend staff meetings for the hour and a half, and council hall meetings for the 45 minutes to an hour, twice a month, and all the other meetings? And he assured me on the phone that that would happen. So I'm a little disappointed that actually he's not here to become president of the council tonight, personally. But I still will support Shane 100%, but he's gotta be here. That's all my two cents.
Well, like all of us, we all sit in this position where we're, we're here to serve. And I think it's up to council to make that decision, to vote whoever they want in, and also to make that decision if you feel that they're serving that position well. You know, serving a president or serving a committee well, or whatever. It's up to council to make those decisions, so.
I just think the timing is unusual, because we've gotta get another council member, and we wanna get started interviewing and getting that person on board. That's why I would not be opposed to have a special meeting some morning this week.
We need a council president to sign bills. We need a council president to do some, do some business.
Doesn't have to be in the morning, it could work out for you guys.
I don't care, I'm free.
Okay, so we need to finish.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jeff Steretz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
And Counselor Scott Steretz. For yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Council has had time to approve and go through the prior meeting's minutes. We had a special council meeting, and we had council meeting on December 16th and committee of the whole.
I would make a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Motion to approve the prior meetings minutes moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Jeff Steretz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. We've had no one wishing to address council this meeting, so we're gonna start with our department heads. We all, you don't have a committee reports either. Rachel.
Ready, okay.
Sorry.
I'll start.
I'm reading ahead. When I read ahead, I get off task.
The, not too much of anything action-wise, a report over the holidays is fairly quiet for us. Small fire we had on New Year's Eve. The main issue we have is the township contracts, but there's, was three townships that decided not to receive service from Waseon Fire Department anymore, being Chesterfield, York, and Pike. Some of those came in, if I remember right, Tom, some of those letters were dated like the 28th and 29th of December, as far as official notices to us, that they'd be canceling the contract. So we're at a point, and being at a meeting with the Clinton Township trustees, part of the verbiage in the contract that we have with Dover and we have with Clinton is that the basis for the new contract renewal was that everybody pays the same rate. So, now we're at the point where some of those townships feel we're gonna respond out there anyhow. And so now we're at the point where you as council and the trustees, I as the fire chief, need to know what we're gonna, what we're gonna do, if we're called out there. Because the basis of the contracts was that everybody that received our services paid the same rate. So I'm not gonna be the one that says we're not gonna go, if we're called to go to an emergency. However, we have signed contracts with other customers that say, this is what we're gonna do. So, at the urging of the Clinton Township trustees, I'm just bringing it to you guys that I think sooner rather than later, there needs to be a joint meeting to discuss a few of these operational agenda items, as far as how we're gonna proceed from here. Because, mainly, not because I'm worried about where the money's gonna come from, but mainly because there's legality issues that we've researched through the difference between mutual aid and automatic aid contracts, and whether we have the authority to be, you know, where we would be responding or not. So there's just a few of those issues that need to be discussed between the entities, being that we jointly operate the fire department.
You guys have any questions?
I think, I agree with you 100% chief, that something's gonna be done in January. And as soon as we get a council president, so we can elect more committees from the council president, then I think we talked about Safety and Code is gonna meet with individuals, so we can get this thing resolved.
I think that's a committee that should be active, Safety and Code.
Correct.
With the joint.
And I think it's urgent in January to get something accomplished. That's what I think. Have those people been notified that they're not covered by us? I mean, are they? You wanna explain the basis of your letter, Tom?
Yeah, so I was concerned when talking to Rick, just in terms of the legal situation, that we'd have to be in a situation where they're expecting the city to come, and we're not authorized to do so. And I think, talking through this with Rick, I think our current position is that, by virtue of there not being the contract in place any longer, and by virtue of the fact that there's no automatic assistance agreement in place with the three townships, that we really don't have jurisdiction to go into those areas for fire protection services, unless we're called upon to do so pursuant to the mutual aid agreement, which requires that the fire departments who are now gonna be servicing them actually ask the fire department to show up. And so I put together a short letter to each of the township trustees, indicating that that was the city's position, just so there's no misunderstanding. And an indication also that the city would be meeting with, in the near future, with the Clinton Township trustees to further discuss the matter, and we'd be back in touch with them. Also indicated that to the extent that we were required to, the fire department was required to show up pursuant to the mutual aid agreement, that it could be subject to charges that might be, that would be agreed upon by the city and the township, Clinton Township trustees, if that's what you guys decide. So, long story short, a short letter to each of the trustees of the three townships, indicating that our understanding is we don't have jurisdiction to come in, so don't expect us to show up first to the, to a fire call. And I also copied Scott Hazelman, the county prosecutor, on that, just so, you know, we're all talking to each other about this, and there's no misunderstanding.
I do have a question with mutual aid. Okay, so if we would go ahead and go, get called for mutual aid, do they have to be at the scene first and assess before they call out for mutual aid?
They don't have to be at the scene and assess first, but they have to make a direct request.
So, if call goes out and it's on County Road 13, they can call for mutual aid immediately?
If, yeah, based on their decision to, they can do that, yes.
So...
Go ahead.
The other day, excuse me, the other day I had a staff meeting, you said something about, there's like one contract.
Yeah.
Like, and it has to be written, that they wanna drop, cancel the contract?
That was the automatic, right?
Well, that was the, um, there was, as of a few days ago, there was one township we had not been notified of yet. If we received that letter Monday of last week, it came in the mail.
Okay, so you didn't have to have it like 30, 60, 90 days ahead of time?
According to our current contract, they're supposed to give us 90 days notice to cancel that contract.
So in other words, really, buy for 90 days, you know?
I, you've got, you had copies, was that your feelings?
Well, the 90-day requirement was, yeah, I mean, I think there were.
I think it was 90 days.
I think there was a 90-day requirement. They asked it to be in their letters, for the termination to be effective as of the first of the year. And so I thought, I mean, I think the decision was, it was in the city's best interest just to, not to fight that, but rather to affirm that the contracts would be terminated pursuant to their request. I mean, I think the basis of their, their lack of interest in renewing is, is that they didn't want to, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, didn't want to address the issue, the fact that the contracts were written back in the 1990s, when the cost of producing services was substantially different, both from an equipment and a personnel standpoint. So if they are interested in terminating based on, you know, not wanting to increase that contribution, then it would seem appropriate to allow them to do so. But was, there was, we could've, we could've pursued that.
Okay, yeah, in other words, though, we're not gonna get in trouble, they're not gonna come back and say?
No, 'cause they asked, they asked for the termination. It wasn't the city terminating, because they wouldn't renew the contract, yeah. Yeah.
And this is just my own opinion, but has anything been discussed of the dispatch for these changes, now that it's 2020?
The, the 911 director had received notices from the three townships that they were changing their coverage area. And they, a few of those letters were vague on what they meant, because they addressed rescue and fire services, where we, we don't address rescue in any contract, we address EMS and fire services. But our contract to provide EMS is with Colton County, because that's where the levy lies. And so, essentially, my understanding from discussions I had with the 911 director Thursday, was that he was told by his boss, the sheriff, to leave everything alone until, because they're not changing anything until it's legally worked out. So the current 911 calls will stay just like they are.
So we're gonna get dispatched out regardless?
Yes, because they haven't, they, as the sheriff's office, who take responsibility for the 911 system, are not changing anything until they hear from their legal department to change it. So they have not changed anything as of yet, because they know that there's a.
How are we supposed to respond?
Because Pike, Pike's letter tried to change both, and Pike doesn't have the authority to change both, because.
Yeah.
The contract for EMS lies with the county. And so it's, so nothing has been changed in the 911 system, is what my understanding is.
So that's, that's kinda bad, because, because the 911 system, of the 14 square miles in Gert Township, is still gonna come to 911, they're gonna dispatch you guys, Waseon Fire Department, to still them 14 square miles first, not Delta, right?
Will still be shown as the first responding agency there, yes. But we're, we come into, we still need to either have a contract for service there?
Yeah.
Or an automatic aid agreement there, which we don't have in writing, to provide legally.
For the safety and legality of it, for ourselves, for your department. We should have something in writing from your township that says for the next 90 days, until we change this.
That needs to happen soon.
Immediately, we will still go with Waseon and pay Waseon, due to the fact that they've got their residents of that 14 square mile in a very bad position. But they got 911 in a bad position. And they got your, your department in a bad position.
Yeah, to answer the call.
There's a lot of arms, there's a lot of arms and hands go into making emergency 911 system work with fire EMS and combining, and they didn't. All of those options and all those arms haven't been consulted with appropriately, especially when we got cancellation letters, the last two days of the year.
Yeah.
So I, I would say the county prosecutor is the person in charge of the county for the legality? Is that right, Tom?
I think he's the chief legal officer and advisor.
For the sheriff's department?
Yeah.
Of the county and the townships, yeah.
So, I think, I only believe that Tom should work with them to come up with an emergency agreement, until we get something worked out.
I would, boy, I kinda look at it as, contract says you gotta have writing 30, or 90 days ahead of time. I would just say, well, you know, sorry about your luck, but, you know, until it's gonna have to stay this way, maybe up to 90 days of the, till the county gets it switched around.
Yeah, and that's something that I think Tom should.
If they do, because they're gonna be waiting on, on what we do.
Well, that leaves you.
It gives us time.
Gives time, and you got, you got a contract that says, you know, 90 days.
Well, I think we may be past that point, given that we have confirmed in writing, and I suppose we could always rescind our acknowledgement and termination, but we have acknowledged or confirmed that we're accepting their termination.
Honestly, my question is the liability of those calls no longer lay on us, since we are no longer in contract on the portion. But I, I feel that it'll be very confusing for our department when that tone goes out and they want us to go out there. That's gonna be hard.
Well, for the time being, everybody's been told, we just, we'll go with dispatch. I don't think there would be too much trouble getting the right people to the right place. The only thing that falls into place is the legalese of it, because the way they hire by its codes written, the authority to go on a property because of a fire is the fire chief that's assigned to that area, and right now, that's not us.
That's why I'm thinking that's gonna be a lot of mutual aid calls, immediately.
In other words, you gotta spray the house and the road.
County Road 13 in the middle, on the west side. That's why I think, I think.
So it's just.
I mean, more, I mean.
And then, and then we run into, if something happens. We get, if, if something happens where there'd be a lawsuit or something, we just wanna make sure our bases are covered the way that code requires us to be covered. So, yeah, it needs to move quicker than it is.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of entities involved in it, so.
Honestly, I don't think we can wait till the committee of the whole meeting to get a president. We need to get that done, like ASAP.
Well, we gotta have 24-hour notice, so.
Yeah.
Probably, maybe we'll set one up for Wednesday, that way.
Maybe Wednesday morning, right away? Just try to get this done, so that we can make this committee, so that we can get moving on it.
7:30?
Eight o'clock.
No.
Eight AM?
Eight, eight, 'cause I got, I got a 7:00 meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
I got them too. Okay.
Wednesday at 8:00?
Well, let's, anybody have any more questions for Rick on any of this? It's kind of a.
Eight o'clock, yeah.
Okay. Chief, check in.
I've been quiet over the holidays at the police department. Our applicant, our candidate for our full-time officer position is finishing up his physical exams and doctor's exams today and tomorrow, so assuming that all, if that all goes well, we will have him started next week. And that is all I have for today.
Any questions for the chief?
Busy last night, huh, chief?
Not too bad for us. Just skipped on the very, very north side of town, so. We did help by blocking off traffic to keep cars out of that aisle, or poor highway, but it was part of that, we didn't really get too involved into it, though.
Fulton County's version of life PD.
A lot of sheriffs and state troopers and other.
Yeah, it started over by Woods Unity Striker area, so.
Someone was bored on the Sunday. All right, kid?
Just closing up the year, getting year-end reports around. We have Resolution 2020-2 for the South Ship Water Line. As long as that passes today on emergency, we will put it out to bid as of Thursday, and we'll have bid openings on this, at 2:00 PM on that, for that project. We're gonna let it run for about four weeks, to get as many advertised bids as we can, but to get it going as soon as possible, so that we can get it started first thing in spring. Also, we have tentatively set unlimited pickup for April 27th through May 2nd. That will be a Monday through Saturday. We are looking at the possibility of next year going with, if we can work it out with the transfer station, just going with the coupon that we put in with the water bills, so people can do their unlimited pickup at their convenience. They would get a coupon, taking it out to the transfer station. It makes a lot more sense for us, it makes more sense for them, and it saves on labor costs as well, if we can work it out with the county. So we decided to go ahead with this unlimited pickup, that way it gives us more time to get the logistics worked out on that.
With a coupon, or could you use it, one that's expired, one that's in a week, right?
No, it would be just, you'd get one coupon for unlimited pickup, one-time drop-off, and no semi-loads or anything like that. And it would, that way it would be going just to residents, and no one else.
Which has always been an issue that we've had.
Well.
Be interesting.
How does that work for, like, the trailer court?
We would still, we would, we would, that's one of the logistic areas we'd have to work out with.
'Cause they, they don't have individual water bills.
Right.
They do, but maybe that would be a time that if we knew how many units they had, that we could more or less just take them.
I'm sure we can work with Ashley downstairs and get the number of units that, say, Tim Dennis has at Wayside, or they have over at Timber Creek or Star Mobile, and get those handed out to the landlord, and he can hand them out to his tenant.
One question.
Yes?
There's a couple, three people that asked me, and I don't have an answer, so I said I gotta come to Keaton for that answer. There was some that residents of Waseon, that said they don't like to keep putting their brush out to the street and killing their lawn, which I'm not one, if you come and look at mine, my lawn's dead. But, they said, and it's all dirt, we're the grass dealers down there. Could, could the city put an area for brush, where they could bring their brush and throw it in a different area?
We had talked about that, but have you ever tried picking up brush when it's in?
No.
Four different ways?
It was just a question I'm bringing to you.
No, that, I had, I had asked John Arbs the same thing, about that, because there's that two-month window when we're not picking up brush.
Yeah.
But when it gets all intermingled in there, there's no, we would have to get a special auger in there to take care of that, and right now, we don't have the equipment to do that. That's why it's just.
Crank it in.
It may be more labor-intensive, but it's easier for us to do it right at the room.
I just told him that I would bring it to your attention, and then, because, they said, what are you doing? What's yours? And I said, I got dirt in my front yard, I don't care.
It's really hard to try to keep the public updated. I mean, we have social media, we, I know our clerk, well, she'll put it out there whenever there's changes. We also try to, we have it on our webpage, but those who are not accessible to that, it is in the paper, I think, as well.
Yeah.
But there's always gonna be those people that don't read or know when that is. And that's that communication, that, that little bit of communication for people who don't get online and stuff, that they just don't know. And each time we put it out in the mailing. And each time we put it out in a mailing list of monthly things or whatever, it's, it's very difficult to try, again.
But that's a good answer. I will use that answer in the future, that it's thought of, but it's at this time not practical.
It's just not practical.
Because we don't have the equipment to actually go in there and just grind it out.
No, if a loader wouldn't be able to pick up.
And the, and the labor intense to sort each one out is...
Yeah, 'cause when, when you pile by the road, you're supposed to lay it all the same.
Put the butt, yeah.
And only a certain size, and you don't, you can't monitor what's coming in, I mean...
So, I, they tried that before and with a...
I think you're right, they did.
They did. Tell people to stack it, it don't work. So, good answer.
A lot of people in town are getting that idea of stacking it with the branches and stuff.
Tell them to put on their neighbor's yard, that way they'll... Don't kill their...
I, I think the city does a good job getting around. I don't see that much sitting out.
It's just that not knowing when they're coming.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, honestly, my husband just did it this year and he, I was laughing at him. I said, they just came through, you're off, you're off kilter. So that you don't, to know when they're gonna be on the north side, the south side. And you get a lot of rain and then you get mud and, you know, there they sit. So, okay. Anything else for Keith? Jamie?
So I provided you an email with the year-end reports along with the income tax revenue report. If you notice, that it was down for the total of the year, four point three percent. Hopefully, we can keep that pretty even now, because it was down that low. I also provided you with the year-end investment report. We consolidated our investment accounts back in September, October timeframe, so all of the fund investments are included in this one account. And I allocate the interest and fees based on the percentage per fund. If you'd like to see those allocations, I can provide those to you as well. And then I guess that's all I have for this evening.
Any other questions for Jamie? Kind of, Tom?
So I've been working with, as we've discussed, working with Rick on these fire contracts and a few other projects for him, and a couple of small matters for Keith. And something for everybody, usually, department head-wise. I would call your attention to the two resolutions, so they're on emergency, or I guess, yeah, both are resolutions. So both are up for, on an emergency basis, and as you know, we need three-quarters of council, of council members to approve in order to be able to do it on an emergency. And looking at the charter, I think it refers to three-fourths of the members of council. We're, we're down one, so I would take that to be three-fourths of five. So as long as we have four, which would be all of you, I think we'd be good to go. If one of you were to dissent or vote no, then that wouldn't pass on emergency. It could still pass on a regular, three readings. But just so everyone's on the same page in terms of how that works. So it's three-fourths of the members of council, which is five, which would be four. And I guess that's really all I have to, to say.
Any questions for Tom?
Okay, great. Let's move on to our first reading, send. Resolution two thousand twenty-one, amend resolution two thousand nineteen thirty-one, annual wage increase for full-time non-union employees, and declaring on emergency.
I would make that motion, second.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-one on emergency reading moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieretz?
Yes.
And Counselor Scott Stieretz?
Yes.
For years, zero days, motion carries.
Final reading, second.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-one on final reading moved by Counselor Jeff Stieretz and seconded by Counselor Scott Stieretz. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jeff Stieretz?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieretz?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
And Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
For years, zero days, motion carries.
Okay, resolution two thousand twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for water main replacement, authorizing the mayor to accept the lowest and best bid, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder, and declaring on emergency.
Second.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-two on emergency reading moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Stickley. Is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieretz?
Yes.
And Counselor Jeff Stieretz?
Yes.
For years, zero days, motion carries.
Final reading.
Second.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-two on final reading moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Jeff Stieretz. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieretz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
And Counselor Scott Stieretz? For years, zero days, motion carries.
Thank you.
At least, the next meeting, or, or, meeting after that, that would be six, so you won't have to say this.
Right, it's all, go on right there.
I'd just say the Stieretz brothers would be done.
Do them together.
All right, we have nothing under second reading or third reading. So under new business, I will need a motion to accept the appointments for the various boards and commissions for the next term.
I would make that motion, a second.
Motion to accept the mayor's appointment to the various boards and commissions moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Scott Stieretz. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieretz?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieretz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
For years, zero days, motion carries.
Okay. I was asked by our former mayor, Jerry Dane Basel, to read a proclamation in honor of his mother's hundredth birthday. This is something that the mayors have always had the honor to do. I seen that on social media, there, the family's out there with her in California right now, celebrating her hundredth birthday. So that's a, that's a milestone, that's amazing. So I do have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas I would like to honor Alda Masl Dame Basel on her hundredth birthday on January sixth, two thousand twenty. Whereas Alda had many years of service at Detwiler Memorial Hospital and Fulton County Health Center prior to retiring in nineteen seventy-eight. Whereas Alda has been a longtime citizen of the Waseon, of Waseon, Ohio, and integral member of Saint Luke Lutheran Church in Waseon. And whereas Alda has been a member of the many Lutheran organizations and clubs, local and statewide. Now therefore, I, Kathy Huner, Mayor of the City of Waseon, County Fulton, State of Ohio, do hereby proclaim the sixth day of January, two thousand twenty, as Alda Masl Dame Basel's day, and encourage all citizens to wish Alda a happy hundredth birthday. And it is in witness, I have here on to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Waseon, Ohio, this thirtieth day of December, two thousand and nineteen. So I sent the original with the family so that they could present it to her. So this is a copy that I'm reading, but I think that's amazing. This is the first one since I've been mayor, one who's reached a hundred years old, so...
The date you got on there, Mary?
December sixteenth is when I signed it.
Oh, okay.
It is today that it is the day.
I heard twenty nineteen, I'm thinking.
Yeah. Twenty nineteen, yeah.
Steve's only got twenty-eight years to go.
Yes.
Her birthday's today.
I know it, I thought, I thought that was pretty neat, so...
And she retired forty-two years, the day the brother's retired, so I can go out and work.
Forty-two years of retirement, that's amazing. Okay, if we have nothing else for our new business, anybody? Okay, we need, well, do we have bills?
Sure do.
Okay. Prove another bills? No one to sign them.
Motion to publicly pay the bills is presented moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Jay Stieretz.
All right.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Oh, I already said that, didn't I? Counselor Jeff Stieretz?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieretz?
Yes.
And Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
For years, zero days, motion carries.
Thank you. Could we have a motion for adjournment, please?
I would make that motion, second.
I got it the other way. Motion to adjourn moved by Counselor Jeff Stieretz and seconded by Counselor Stickley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.